Page.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, we're in closed session.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are back in open session. Any new questions? Okay. Uh, I, future work topics. Anything? So, um, actually I have one, I was approached by a constituent that, um, I think has been working with and, um, Lynn Seth regarding, uh, addictions and, and what, what, is there, is there anything we can do? Is there anything at the county level that's in our purview to be able to do to help prevent drug, uh, addiction? And, and, and his push was, that's fine, all we ever do is somebody gets addicted and then, then we spend all this money trying to get them unaddicted and is there, what, is there any, is there anything that we can do to help prevent that? And, and so it's a prevention thing and so I'm just, I told my, uh, constituent that I would bring it up and I don't know if there's something, and I don't know, uh, Amy, is there anything that you're aware of that we could discuss at a work topic, at a work meeting regarding prevention, drug abuse, I don't know, maybe give it some thought maybe and if you Okay, yeah. Sure, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, right, I, we, we, we're not going to do it as a work topic, but, but is there something that we Thanks, Amy.
Thank you. So with, uh, both of us, we're looking just at the pain detection, the five areas of remediation and the one that you were speaking about was harm reduction. Um, and so my intent, uh, before of an RFP, and before we present the RFP's applicant tool, uh, my plan is to provide a very high level overview of the five areas to comply with that education.
Awesome.
Um, on those areas, and then should you want additional information.
Perfect, thanks, Amy. Got it. Okay. Anybody else, did you have any future work session?
Um. Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, Jim.
So, would, would that be at a work session or at a community health board meeting? Okay.
Wherever, wherever it's appropriate, I think, you guys can No, no. Okay. Dave, you're up. Greater Bemidji.
Okay. Good fact, as I think you know, I like to come back and I think we'll do it next month if we have to check in and just what happens is this month it coincides with our annual meeting. And so I had gathered a little bit of information on data and such and for that as well, and talk a little bit about, uh, you know, this year more. Let me check in and get your ideas. What I can do today is take a little bit of time just to, I'll give you a feel for the economy, uh, let's go. Talk a little bit more about I'll just, probably Juncus. Uh, but I want to go over the information, but I think it's important, uh, because we go about our daily business and we don't how are we doing, where are we at? Happy, all the economy, I'd like to share with you that over the last year, that was how, again, where does that come from? Something about this thing called hazard is a sense of uncertainty and what I share with my like those who are looking to expand want certainty. And so when you have an uncertain environment, which you get as a pause, and I think what you're having the last six months projects. Probably even had a but I think, like I said, short term, we certainly have a slowdown, we'll talk about that, but longer term, if you pause and step back and look just 10 years ago end line, it's clear that our longer term horizon, we're on both, uh, curve, but, and secondly, if you look at talk a little bit about that. In your, I did have our report by the way, uh, two don't read it at night unless however, a little bit more information, I think. Uh, as we look let's talk a little bit about data. What I like to do is really dig into some of the information past building boards, uh, so let's start first about employment, this is the type of perspective we know. How are we growing up? How are we increasing the number of people within the area now we use, when I say up here, we'll talk about degree. That is about the kind of data I'm showing here is towards the you look at the, just the last year, fairly flat, we created 90, I think 90 and you're friends online, they so in terms of the funding, though, it's two things, one is strong, uh, I could say that I like back on labor, right? How we go on in committee, right? Get the, what has happened in labor force are people overlap. But is labor force, I should find out by the way, how they define labor force and people go by 196 from but if you look at that in the end line, yeah, it's great, of course, we just talked about home employment group 10%. Another thing I'll point out that 196 growth in labor force and just a minute ago we talked about having 99 that was the case for us. More people than going your data source, um, and is a bounce up, that's a wrong direction. Said that, if you take the 10 year trend again, the, the half of the substantial decline of the five people are less, remember think of that, that's great. Point off the fact that of that, of course, is just keep talking about decorating. Mismatch, right, is a mismatch in job. That mismatch, and how will we break that? How, how important? And if you look at this, uh, and you think Tony's role in the economic like that ultimately, what does it mean when you're that's the rate also. That's about. 2014. So another five years earlier. Obviously, they aren't. How about the school back decades? So you can see what I'm saying. Last year was slow. Overall, if you take the longer term. Other indicators, and these are specific to Bemidji, I apologize. Sales of Bemidji around 55%. You've probably seen it perhaps. That's going to be, that's going to be.
Dave, just a quick point. If you, if you discounted that for inflation, how much would that have been?
Don't know.
Okay.
Love to do that, but more remember, the mayor actually quizzed me on that the other day. I probably should have figured that out. I don't know the difference, because certainly rising inflationary prices will add to that number.
Right.
There's no doubt, I just. Again, but again, last year was 1%. So that's up mid flatline, you might see that in your sales deck, but you're lodging on the. As particularly. All of that brings me. That's 4% growth. Actually, just use city data. That's something. That doesn't mean the development's not. In summary, in terms, I use an organization. And that for fall there. In terms of economic strength of. Per pound. And now around 114,000. For like four, about 18. Had to know who did better, Fairbowl Red Wing and California. So I wanted to get into that a little bit, and so I actually. I use Fairbowl because they're number one. Turn on the lamp on the mark. It is a point of growth of. But there's like. summary in terms of data. The other regional centers similar to us. I'll talk a little bit about last year, some of the things we did at Greater Bemidji, there's certainly more data. In the report, in the inside part of the report, about a specific number of businesses we served, all those different things. But I just want to highlight. A few of the items, and Tom gave me some suggestions of things that might particularly pique your interest, draw a little attention, so a few of them, so. First off, I think we really focused this last year, its small business, so we actually focused since COVID a lot on our small businesses. In the last year, we got some funds from the state home organization for grant couple small businesses partnership grant. That allowed us to provide free business advice and services to 154 businesses. Incredible how much work has done. And we've become a significant, truly significant. To somewhere small businesses, our smallest businesses that needed. During and after COVID, we currently still have a portfolio of loans of 200 loans. That, of course, is the. A substantial number of loans, but those are slowly. Still doing the traditional economic work, development work. But also, of course, focus on startups. That's something we talked about here before, the launch path that we created. We currently have 50 launchpad members that use our space to try and start their companies or run their companies. One of the things I'll highlight is that was designated by the state as the regional hub. For the launch of the SOB. That allows us to do is partner with our original partners, so four directions up Red Lake, Glatte Creek, financial. All the way over to Boston, and Warwood, and up into. Lake and Woods. And so we're actually providing services to all entrepreneurs and all of our placement right here. At the material. In terms of workforce, I think it's our number one challenge and our number one. We created a trading center over a decade ago, a decade ago, it's called MI2, it's still operating today. Last year, it had about 165 tradies and put it. 45 different companies. I think people, kids, trainees, workers to workforce. Really good jobs. I mean, that's the nice thing, it's a cool customer and sense for the business, but sure, providing nice careers. Work we're doing there, we also quietly got involved in childcare. At the encouragement, by the way, of the state and you. Me in front of you a few years ago, you can talk to me about childcare. Childcare here in our county, and so we, we funded now four childcare centers across the community. Creating, I think this last year, 54 if I'm. Okay, an effort that's ever helped to create a child. Exciting to see some childcare, still a big problem. Still a massive problem, but we're going to continue to try and address some of that at our level, and of course, that's because of order, right? Got to reduce the barriers to people not able to go to work. Couple of interesting things over the last year that, that I think you're going to hear a little bit more about in the coming year. One is. You, those who have been on the county board for a while, remember my effort to create a wood pellet manufacturing facility here in Bemidji, we're very close. Making that happen, lots of reasons it didn't. But the basis of that issue, if you remember, was the wood residual issue, right? So we have all these sawmills. Across particularly northern Minnesota, the largest in the upper Midwest is on our doorstep. Now potlatch, and their number one challenge is wood residuals, right? That sawdust, chips, that type of thing. And the challenge is, it used to be worse, something particularly when there was a large pulp and paper industry. Paper usage lay down. Consequently, those markets, you know, so we've got to find the answer, make sure all the trees are. Are valued, all parts of the tree. And so the latest effort is of interest. I think we're uniquely positioned, I think Commissioner Berson's involvement with me, which is. The state of Minnesota and Delta Airlines on the effort to create Minnesota being the sustainable aviation fuel hub for the nation. Process to say, how can we in this state position ourselves with Delta Airlines to be the number one? Focuses have been entirely on it. Right at the gap, very similar thoughts. But if you think about, if you understand the chemistry, which I don't, but. If you do, I'm told if you understand the chemistry, truth be told, wood usage is even better. Question is, is it possible, and we're having conversations with Delta and the Greater MSP, which is our partner organization of the. About being the northern of. Simple aviation fuel out of wood. Wouldn't that be possible? At our airport. We're working through that, I think there's a possibility there, but I do think, again, that is, that is a longer term solution. To a challenge for our wood industry, but what means so much, not just to the wood industry. But you guys, all of us as county public landowners, right? All the loggers that struggle, right? Second one I'll mention, we're certainly trying to, to lay some infrastructure for long-term growth. When income, just started conversations, I met with Tom about this, about expanding industrial park here in Bemidji. Not just for the land, but to try and extend with the real one. We. Don't have much real access. Had some real access, so we're starting to work with the end to try and expand our industrial park. And provide that real access as well, development sites. Where what they call shovel ready is the buzzword in economic. shovel ready for companies. Second one is, we helped the city of Bemidji secure. $1.6 million to help build a airport development park, called Airport, to encourage aviation related development here in Bemidji. There's lots of reasons that it's in an interesting spot right now, but I think it's a really long term positive opportunity. For our region to really encourage additional development at the airport. All on board, thankfully, to do that. Now, the last one I'll just mention for, just off the side, that it's certainly been a trend to do one. We've chosen not to let this redevelopment of the airport. I don't want to get into it too deeply, we've talked about the law and some of that. We're continuing to push forward on the law and society, in part because of the place making initiative. And the ability to attract people to our region, you've got the law and society brings, but also when you're cleaning up a. And ultimately, it will be the largest. Or private sector development. Those are some highlights. And then last year, to share a little bit of, real quickly, this simply about next year. I think this year, we're going to be thoughtful. I think this is the year that we're going to pause a little bit, look at our action plan for those who've been on the county board, you know, we've had the same focus areas for a decade. We did that intention, but now is the time for us to look at those in deep. Assess how we're doing, are we doing the right things, and what to do differently, if we're doing that right now. And we're going to invite our partners, including you all, if you have an interest to be part of that discussion. Prom especially be involved. Really think about, are we doing the right thing, or what else could we do? I just want to thank you, county's been a long term part. You do, it really makes this a great place to. Happy to have a question for you.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Chair, Dave, thank you. I was wondering if you could talk for a minute about how the recent federal money, the last couple of years, of how that's been helpful locally? And, and the benefits of a potential county economic development authority?
I saw the presentation the HRBC they gave in terms of economic development, I think it was absolutely true that there's federal problem out there that we need to. Is, how do we make sure we get access and put? Additionally, that's kind of near the. So what I work with. Kind of interesting, I feel like I still work there after being there. The question I had, and Tom and I had a little conversation about it with the HR of schools, can you do that with or without agents? I see no. I don't see any reason not to do it. I mean, it provides you additional opportunities to invest in your communities, your economy, the things that you can't do as a. But I think it's a positive thing, but I don't think waiting to create a county aviation keep. Hard to find additional resources.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just think, let's not wait. But I. This gives you additional opportunity.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, Dave. Appreciate the time. You did good. You did good. But, but I'm pushing everybody along today. Thanks, Dave. Amy, is this your topic? All right, come on up and tell us about the diaper bank. Now, you, it was just shave a minute off, we'll, yeah, okay. Thanks.
To be standing before today to announce that. Is being offered the opportunity to be a hybrid partnership level, which entitles our agents into the common benefit of. Who will get up to a maximum distribution of. 5,000 diapers in 2025. Opportunity for us to be the hub for diaper distribution. In a short time, which was less than three weeks, Monaco was able to not only put the application together. But is able to put together some partnerships for other places that will help post on the diaper distribution. Northwest Indian Community Management Center, so the NWI CTC, by county community. Also going to be able to support the diaper distribution through. That will house and host the majority of the diapers that other agencies. The current supply of diapers that your agency have. Right now, they'll try to be counting, our access to diapers is limited on if we have a grant availability. First thing, a person grant, which lets us chip only for being able to provide diapers to our personal clients. For the NWI CTC, those families have to, or will supplies by attending. Different community setting programs that they offer. Most of those diapers that they have access to are only discussed. Prices times, and what's unique about this program is that people don't have to give in crisis. Have access to diapers and wipes and not let that burden lie on them for that expense. The VICA, all their enrolled families would be eligible for diaper distribution during home visits or during program if they're. Participating in programming in their facility. And the pre-show, they only get right now one visit per month, which is all. An account that's based on the size of their family. Also. And the Northwood Pregnancy Center. Those, they also print on a point system and. They get their diapers, all of these. They get their diapers, all of these sources you get.
You did good, Amy. Does anybody have questions for Amy? Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, not so much a question for Amy, but a question for my colleagues here. Does anybody know how much diapers cost nowadays? Okay. So 20 years ago, um, almost 21 years ago, next month, um, I had my first child. Diapers then were $20. And I think you'd get roughly, um, maybe 100 and some diapers, you know, per case. Now, um. I'm fortunate enough to be, uh, a grandfather buying diapers for my grandson. And now they are $50 for 90 diapers. So, uh, thank you, Amy and, and Monica for everything that you guys are doing for the community. Um, diapers are, are really important and they are really expensive. So I appreciate the work you ladies are doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else?
Favor, I would like to inform you that, uh, would like your.
I think you got the nod, Amy. Thank you very much. Thanks, Amy. Appreciate it. David, is this, um, the domestic violence court update is that yours? Thanks, Dave.
You know, and I'm going to talk to you today a little bit about domestic violence and we may, we have some good things that are happening. But violence in itself is not only something to talk about and. By who I have come and talked to, you know, the. Of court, uh, process, um, so much of it that is collaboration and that's what makes. The departments, so our county attorney's office, enforcement, our community-based advocates, um. Health providers, our county county health and human services, our child protective workers. All of us have to work together, otherwise we. Lots of things that has been. I started and maybe, um, in 2011, 2012, uh, when we kind of got a, um. What can be different? Some violence against women grant. Help there to develop domestic violence support. Office on Saturday afternoon read this and so. Corrected them to that. But I know now. That's that woman that was still, you may have. All violence? No. All violence. One of the things that I wanted to just mention about the case. One of the things that the woman. Other, we're the children in the home. And, um, you may have. At the red flags when they. Especially in child custody cases. Was involving some child custody issues. Probably no more in the next days. But my, my first reaction is we can't look at those red flags if we don't know what they are. Oh, for us to have training in the. What we need to be looking for is crucial. When we started this program, I became the coordinator in 2013. I was hired under that grant and. Um, as long as that grant funding sustained, I can keep my job, but as in any grant, uh, position, that is 100% grant. On the judicial branch. Um, I continually try to work for that, um, but, um, right now we are grant funded. There are only two courts in the state of Minnesota. Funded, um. As Delta County County and Roseau, which I'm supporting also. Um, and so we are very few. There are a couple of other domestic violence. Projects around the Kennedy, for around the state, but only those two courts are physically. So, um, we struggle, you know, we continue after grants to. But it's such important work. Um, I wrote down a few of the things that we have done since the beginning. Um, we, we followed this through that coordinating community response team. Those decision makers from each of those. That's finally the other month and. Um, we established judicial review hearings. So the folks that are criminally charged and, uh, ordered into our program. Then they come in front of the judge, uh, at four weeks, every eight weeks. And then report to the judge. So there's some accountability there. Also, a lot of relationship building, trust building with. Um, where can I go to for help? Can I go to, um, to? Probation was establishing protocols for getting, uh, judges' information for those reviews all along and building on this support coordination of those. Our probation is a huge, uh, leg of what our, uh, program does. We have probation agents that have a specific. Our direct communication with each other. Also sit in our. The folks that are. Perpetuating. Relationship. Having judicial monitoring, having probation monitoring. Um, we have a several better than intervention program groups that are really functioning really well in our community, like. Part of taking a look at our statistics. Numbers that were coming through, um, and the amount of groups that we had to offer, um. Actually, but there needs to be. Um, we just were insufficient in that. We now have four or five, um, local groups, one for women, four. Our, uh, our online groups. Phenomenal. They do phenomenal things over there. Um, and part of that was, um, just. Population that. Population that comes. That is our tribal neighbors. Up to the provided services are better than. With our private partners. Um, we connected a lot heavier with our shelter. Uh, when I first started, the shelter was in dire. Um, they were falling apart. They were totally cracking at the seams. Falling out of the windows and they were seeing people, we seen. Started to take a look at that. Safety. Offer their safety in the shelter. Have some better space to house women and children. Um, we still turn probably 300 to 400. For children. Uh, so I, I don't know if you know, but there is a. That training for many of our project partners, um, thank you. Uh, domestic violence, violence against women was. Continuing to write grants to expand our services. Like Dave said, we became a mentor. Which was a real honor because there was only some. Parts in the entire nation selected to do that and we were one of them. Had a program called Jail Surveillance Project that was really well done. We ran out of funding for it when I wrote a grant. Four hours, four hours a week, I believe it was for two different officers to. To listen to House Home Call, look at social media sites, um, and monitor video that they maybe wouldn't have been able to in their regular hours. Uh, to monitor for no contact or violation. Uh, to the person that we're not supposed to have contact with and we. Lot of violations, find a lot of that happening, um, and we. Uh, our newest project was a, a grant that I wrote to develop a supervised visitation and safe. That is a very dangerous. So we are in the development phase of that right now. We've, uh, contracted with North. Specific. I believe that in the packet. That I wanted to talk to you about quickly and I'm not going to talk about the whole thing, but I wanted to highlight those, um, gold columns. Um, this statistics for back in 2016, I have been keeping statistics. Um, so from 2013 to, uh, 2023, well, that's a 10. So we had a total of 1,834. So females, 89% of those defendants. Um, and like I said, if we are looking at those year numbers of who that's, you know, involving, we've got a dependent area. That represents about 1.25 children. Now we're looking at over triple. But if you look at the conviction rates there. 80% conviction. Um, somewhere between 50 and 75% of those. Files get ordered into our DV court and I want to note that if we see in 20. For 2023, that was almost 76% of the files that were convicted that way. In her program and knowing, having the tools that they need to. Uh, that the IP completion rate, I, I think that that's really a good sign. Um, just last week, we had several more in 20, from the 2022 files complete and we're up to 65% of our. Look at that 2023 number, there says it's only 33%. 22 years for them to. Completing the. Number, but if you back up to 2022. Um, with those new completions that I didn't get added in this report, we're at 65% completion rate. Um, when we look at recidivism, the national reoffense with no intervention whatsoever, somewhere between 95 and 60% will. For us, we define our reoffense as any new file coming through the Delta County. That's and our complete, our battery intervention groups doesn't rate is dropping to two point. So we have almost a ninety-eight. I'm proud of that. I'm the only person that. The court system, I don't let anybody else touch the data because I don't want it to go wrong. On by myself, so I'm working at, you know. So I guess, you know, I'm proud of that. Are we, you know, advocating domestic violence, like I said? Have those numbers going down?
Busy. Deb, thank you very much for the work you're doing and Dave, thank you. Appreciate your coming and sharing that with us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Bruce.
Got a couple of informational items for you today. Uh, first one, some really good news. Grants that we've received when I submitted this agenda bill, it was two grants, bank and violence programs. Um, we have received uh for for all kind of from the same. Work out of our Commonwealth Safety Plan, it has a list of suggestive projects in there. However, um, on. Proactive projects. The first one is the mailbox supports. I came to. Fire. Hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for replacing. Second project. Product that was in our Commonwealth Safety Plan that is for a roundabout continuous action. Running with us. Bringing traffic down a complex and so that was. Those dollars for that project in twenty. Last two projects are for district wide striping. Projects that the group with other counties and our district apply together and and striping is sexy. Maintenance project for us, that actually are maintenance dollars by getting. Breaking the paint joint lasts over the years and so you're. Funding for twenty-seven, twenty-two seven. Hundred and seven. Eight, we got a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. For all those four grants.
Awesome. Thanks, Bruce. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just keep in mind how much time we have.
So I know I know the uh how busy the intersection can be. You're at uh eleven and six because that's the way I come in and leave. Um. It's kind of wondering, is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to cover the cost of of a roundabout?
Could be more than half, but yeah, that's why they thought so.
And and that's if uh prices don't continue to to go up.
Issue with the the railroad tracks being in close proximity to that or?
Uh, it's the railroad tracks, it's the turn lane, the bus, the bus is having to stop and I will have to kind of take them there.
Yeah, it'd be interesting how they'll work that into the picture because the buses have to stop for the railroad tracks, right?
You know, buses self-wound, they will have to stop.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, that could be interesting.
Northbound, it's like turn lanes, the buses can stop in the turn lane, so. We've got a good.
Any other questions for Bruce on that? Uh, how about objects in the road right away? I guess that must be yours too, right?
So this is a subject that. Has been on the. In the government's agenda well before I came here. Objects. In general, objects in right away, they're not supposed to be there. Business sign landscaping, anything. Or like that, we are. That's illegal to be there. And local policy. Modified. Have a policy in place here that I shared. We've been working towards getting these objects all the right. Um, did a preliminary survey, we had like seven hundred objects that we found. Business signs out there to someone who has some landscaping. Oh, then we have to working toward figuring out exactly if there. Find. Survey these things that were. Also had to research what the right away looks. Not an easy thirty-three foot corridor, it's thirty-three, it could be fifty, it could be a hundred, it can be. Forty-four, we hit our right away areas to go down between. Well, we've been gathering this information out there, we have not, we've sent out some letters. But hopefully we're in the place now of this rank. Of letters. First, with plenty of time for them to.
Appreciate the heads up.
This is not, this is not new for the board because we went to require a discussion and we had folks calling us at that time because. As to them, but many remind.
Okay, we're just going to be sending out a bunch of letters. Prior discussion, we thought to do with kind of a prioritization of objects. One thing, I mean, mailbox supports, some of those were, yeah.
Any other questions for Bruce? Thanks for catching up some time for us. Thanks, Bruce. Kevin?
Watching the meeting doesn't know glam, I'm Ted Frapp, I'm the director of our G I S department. And we wanted to talk a little bit today about corner remonumentation, a few different topics over and over again, a little bit of background about remonumentation, what it is, it's been a while since we've talked about this. And a progress update in terms of where the county is at with remonumenting those corners and talk a little bit about the new funding opportunities. Talk about remonumentation, we're talking about the process of restoring and preserving all of the original. Okay, you start at the boundary. From the water line. Files in the snapshot. Six five over. A downtown with the variety of the.
Kevin, is that microphone turned on?
It is. The light is.
Okay.
I I haven't noticed.
Not coming through well. Uh, yeah, we may have to have I T check into that. Thank you. Yeah.
Kind of a a snapshot. Federal government, federal government program. Wants to wants to work it all. I'll get. In here. Questions for John?
Mr. Chair, so Kevin, back to your map there. You said we're less than fifty percent? Complete?
State map?
Okay, but in the county, we're over fifty percent complete, right?
It's a little bit secret because part of, a couple of reasons that I'll, I'll say. This is a little bit outdated now. This, the state put this information together two or three years ago, and they were starting to plan for this legislative effort. So some of the stuff that we finished over the last few years was not accounted for yet. And it's, we have a couple of townships that we may have omitted a corner here and there. I think there's some other ones in the southeast part of the county where there was a lot of state land that could be. So even though we have been showing. It looks like, well, it looks pretty much done.
Yeah.
When you look at it on township by township basis, instead of actual corner by corner, countywide, that's, that's kind of.
Okay, okay, so I was kind of wondering because it, I mean, it looks like we're almost done. And I remember when, when Jane was here a number of years ago and we got started, how expensive it was. And just wondering if you can ask the state for some of that money back that we invested.
If you look at this map, you can kind of see north, northwest of the midge, self-terrific reservation. The map looks even more busy than in some other areas, like there's a lot more points all stacked together in there. Those townships were surveyed originally using a different method that was called the three mile method. And so there were a lot more original corners that were set using that surveying method. And we have not reestablished all of those. We've only done the ones that make up the core corners of a section and then the ones halfway between each section corner, so every half mile. But in some of those townships, there were a lot more that were done. That's, that's another, that, that just occurred.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just wondering, when we do the remonumentation and it changes the property boundaries of people that have had property for decades, maybe. You know, the legality of that, or how, how does that, you know, how does that work?
First thing I'll say is that the question that best answer via land survey, the giant. But in general, when, when surveyors are out and they're reestablishing these, what they are doing is to the best of their ability, determining where was that original line, that, that's the goal, is to figure out, you don't have to go off and nothing there. They need to be re-measuring and researching everything that they can to determine there a hundred and fifty years ago, a crew was out and put a marker in the ground to establish that order. That's, and that is what controls that original mine that was placed there. In general, from what I understand from the legal side of it, that's, that is. So what has, we've, we've seen examples where over the years there's been misunderstanding, there's been misinterpretation about where that boundary was, where in the original mine that was. Land surveyors have disagreed on it, and it does sometimes get tied up into. I don't have a real great answer for it as far as what this means and what impact it has, but. Or right that you do see some of those.
Yeah, thank you.
Richard?
And, and Kevin, I know that when they were doing some of the land that I own, they, you know, some people feel that just because there's an old fence line, that must be the boundary. And a lot of cases, it's not. So that caused some ire along the way, too.
We had an example of that exact thing. Last two years, I believe, we had property that went into Paulus, and they were concerned about where the crew had gone out and set a new marker. And they said, it's wrong, it's not a square spot. And the crew went back and did more research and they talked more of their county surveyor, and they found that, yeah, it actually was putting the wrong location. They went back and corrected, and then it was exactly that. There was a fence along some farmland, and they assumed, well, this fence looks like it's been there a long time, and they backed that into what they did. And the landlord told us specifically, he did not build that fence. He purposely built our fence off the line so that he could maintain grass on both sides. But they hate on one side, I think, and wanted to be able to still run tractors during the time on one side. So we purposely offset it off the line. I assume are not always a perfect individual.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Get those grants so you can get those four townships in my area done.
It was, it was interesting, I went down to Alexandria and went to the MRC meeting, the very first one, after we joined the Minnesota Rural Counties. And they brought up that, that grant opportunity, so I'm glad that we're taking advantage of it.
Yeah, it's an exciting.
Thank you. And then the other Kevin.
Yeah, P squared.
You know anybody that has any IT experience that could work on? Apologies to those that are listening online, we are having a technical difficulty with our microphone at the podium. Sorry. I could point mine in your direction, you could yell really loud.
It sounds like it though, doesn't it? It's erratic, I understand.
Well, you want to continue or you want to try to fix this?
Uh, no, let's continue. Like I said, I did point mine in your direction, if that helps, I don't know, we'll see what happens.
Well, good afternoon, commissioners. I got the opportunity to come here and give you a presentation, artificial intelligence and what it means to the local governments. So we'll start off with, what is AI? AI refers to the simulation of human intelligence and machines that are programmed to think and learn. It encompasses technologies such as machine learning, natural language processing, and robotics. The main goal of AI is to replicate or simulate the cognitive abilities of humans, such as communication, learning, perception, problem solving, and reasoning. It involves various subfields, including computer vision, expert systems, machine learning, natural language processing, and robotics. So a basic overview of how AI works is you give it some kind of input, whether it's a chatbot where you ask a question or give it a command. It puts that towards its database of information that it has, predicts what kind of results you're looking for, and then gives you a result. It is not perfect every time, but that's where the machine learning comes into place. It'll go by people that have asked similar questions and said, okay, this is what they wanted, but if that's not what you wanted, it goes back. Reevaluates or analyzes the information and then gives you another result of how you did something that you're happy with. Some popular tools, AI is not, AI isn't everything encompassed in one, like many people think that it does everything. There's different variation of tools. One of the most popular ones is probably ChatGPT. And that's one of the chatbots where you ask it a question, or you tell it to do something, and it outputs results like reports, policies, stuff like that. Jasper is used for content creation. People that run blogs and like marketing field would use something like this to create content for their websites. Generally, you can input a report, it will read through it, it will adjust for the type of tone and stuff like that that you're trying to portray it. You'll also do other things with it as well. Descript is a video creation where you can put in, input stuff for, I want a video like this. It'll read your text, try to create a video and stuff like that. The same with the GOL E3 image creation, you give a textual information, and it will create an image based on what it thinks you want to see. And MUR is a voice and music creation, so it can take text and create a humanized voice to go along with it. If you watch TikTok or Facebook or any of those things, you probably have heard some of the voices have been created from a program similar to this. And these aren't all of them, these are just some of the popular ones people are using. Another one that I didn't include is the Microsoft Copilot. That is also going to be like a chat GPT that's incorporated into your Microsoft products. So if you open up Word and tell it, create me a report on this, it'll go through and generate a report, whatever you're looking for. And that is an additional cost. Right now, last time I looked, the cost of that program was more than repaid for all of our three sixty five per person. Of course, some of the benefits of AI reduces human error. This would be huge in the medical field where, as you know, doctors in the States have dire consequences. It'll help automate repetitive tasks, it'll improve process and workflows. It can retain so much information in the databases that it can go through and say, okay, this is what you're doing. This is what I believe you're going to do, and this is a better way to do it. Also, one way we use it here is it automatically finds the novels on the network. So it builds a database, learns all of the network traffic, or programs that would run on our computers. And it knows what the normal ones are, are after a certain learning time. It says, okay, this one looks different. Let's stop this one, or at least alert somebody that this is something. It has a big benefit is it's always available. All right, some of the risks of AI, privacy concerns. Every time you put in information into an AI engine or something like that, it keeps it. So you don't have any control, so you've got to be very careful what information you're giving it, whether it's private, public, county information, personal information, it holds on to it directly. Along with that are the security risks. Again, what are they doing with that information? You don't have any control over it, could expose you to something you never even thought possible. And of course, dependence on AI, just like internet and technology, we're all dependent on it. What happens when we get so dependent on it, we can't even function to do things we normally did. That would make me think of like twenty years ago, I used to remember probably fifty different phone numbers. Now, I don't know if I've memorized two or three, better than my own. But what happens if this fails, you're stuck. Deep fix, I don't know if you guys have heard of what those are. Maybe you've seen it on the news, one instance where they can put a face over yours and look just like somebody else. They use all those voice matching programs, and you wouldn't be able to tell it's somebody else. Another one I've heard on the news is people perpetrators are grabbing voices of children from the internet, whether it be Facebook. Wherever they'll grab a sample of a voice, they will get the hold of the information for the parents' call. And they will say, we have the child, this is the ransom, and they will have the child's voice talk to the parents. There's stuff like that. And of course, with all the automation and stuff like that, you're going to have job loss. And next, who knows, the demise of humanity, we've all seen Terminator by robot, is this where it's going to go, we don't know. All right, some current uses that we use just in our local government and places. The biggest tool I've seen people use is ChatGPT. Some of our, uh, IT group I'm in, they said that they've had people use it for contracts, policy writings. I've used it for programming certain things where I'm stuck and I don't know how to get it to finally do this. You input it because they use this command control. Some people are using website chatbots, same thing, you go to the website, instead of doing a search, you type in what you're looking for. They'll bring you to a site that receives information, maybe be able to have a little more human-like conversation. And again, we're using it in our antivirus, antivirus integration here, so it's monitoring and keeping us safe now. As a brief overview, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just curious, what folks are saying that's on the immediate horizon as far as affecting government operations? County government operations, have you been hearing anything from your statewide association?
Nothing major, biggest things are security. One thing with AI, once it's got information, it's a computer. Opening or something, they can write programs that will target vulnerabilities. Always things like that, so we're going to be fighting AI with AI. Our own AI, they'll be able to tell us our vulnerability, they'll patch our vulnerability, and hopefully it's faster than we put. We see it now every day, just on email scams and phishing scams, the relevant programs are putting our icons on their websites and kind of.
I know there's a National Association of Counties AI working group that was formed towards the end of last year. And, you know, they've been shooting out information to different state level entities. And I, I don't know, maybe you went to that presentation in DC, Tim, but it's a good resource anyway. Yep, so.
There are to be working on AI policies for government.
Yep, it'd be worth checking out, I'd say.
I belong to a NACO project.
Oh, very good, okay. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, I, I did have a chance to get a little bit of information in regards to the NACO's AI exploratory committee. And this is actually one of their products that they came out with, that is an AI-generated book that explains, you know, counties and county roles, it goes over commissioners, county boardrooms, sheriffs, county administrators. So AI, you know, is in all the doom and gloom that some of, some of us may worry about, but it is something to worry about, you know. So I'm, I'm glad that you participated in, in the AI exploratory committee, Commissioner Gould as well. I'm kind of wondering how this AI might change how we do business with like, I, I think it's a baker tillie, or who does our, our job descriptions? Because I, I know that we, we spend money to send out, you know, evaluations of updating our current jobs and whatnot, is, is AI going to be able to do something to possibly save the county money on, on that type of thing, or?
Actually, if you don't have information in the AI engine, you'd be able to just like any job description.
But there, there could be a potential that we, we are, that we're sending these off to somewhere, they could potentially be doing. So I mean, we, we could just pay ChatGPT or, or whatever and save some money. I'm always trying to look out for, for the, the well-being of our county when it comes to our finances, so. Yeah, so. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Kevin? Kevin, thank you very much for that presentation, appreciate it, thank you. And right on time for the county administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have just a short update for you this afternoon. It's been a busy couple of weeks, but most of the time and attention, the office has been focused on getting the jail project to where it is. And of course, we have some big items for you on the regular session this afternoon for your consideration. So I won't, I won't give you any updates on that because those will come with the regular session update. But just wanted to let you know, we just received word from Hubbard County's county administrator that they were successful in hiring a new county highway engineer, which is great. You might recall that they entered into a professional services agreement for us, for our highway engineer. They have given us notice that they will no longer need those services as of the end of March, so. They have given us notice that they will no longer need those services as of the end of March, so a little bit earlier, just about a month or so earlier than we thought, so this is kind of good news for them, good news for us, we can stay focused on our projects and whatnot, so. I think it was a good arrangement and certainly helped them out for the two and a half or so months as they've moved through that process. Lastly, just have a couple important dates for you to to be aware of. The first one is the Red Lake State of the Band, I know I've reminded you of this before, but just so I've got you. It's Friday, February twenty third at ten AM at the Oshki Majitada Event Center in Redby. I do believe they are looking for an RSVP, so if you haven't done that yet, you might want to do that or let me know and I can do that for you. Also, I was going to let you know, since this is the last board meeting before the first board meeting in March, the Tuesday, March fifth meet, board meeting happens to coincide with the presidential nomination primary. And it will be held because of that event in the commissioner's conference room. This boardroom will be actually full wall to wall of ballot counters and all of that sort of stuff, so we actually, we tried to move them, but there's no room anywhere else in the county to house that activity. So as has been done in the past, we have decided to take the board meeting and just move it over to the conference room, we'll set it up for that. We'll be trying out some new technology for the live stream. You might recall that the county purchased a object or a video streaming device called an owl that we provided to the extension office. So it'll be our first time kind of using that in a live setting, but we're getting training on it and we're going to try it out beforehand and hopefully that works out pretty well. In any event, I'd want to let you know that our work that evening will have to conclude by six o'clock by statute. That shouldn't be a problem for us, I don't think we're going to have anything that's going to take us near that long, I I don't see anything on the horizon to be concerned about with that, but I just want to let you know, that's where the meeting will be and that's the reason for it and we'll do our best to keep it kind of seamless as it relates to the to the the work and also the live streaming of the activity, so that's all I have for you, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Tom? Any other business items that you want to bring up? I have one, is there any possibility that we can close the exercise room during our board meetings? The thump, thump, thump is a little bit distracting.
It has, it has been distracting for a little while. We could certainly look into that and try to encourage people to do less thumping. Maybe we can keep it open, but they can do other things that aren't quite so loud.
Just a thought.
Yes, we could maybe post a sign or whatnot, we'll look into that, Commissioner.
With regard to the agenda, any, I know that there's one change that we need to make to the agenda, does anybody have? It's item seven G on the consent agenda because of some minor changes to the contract for the housing administration that we needed to put it on the regular agenda, so then Dave can explain what the changes were and then we can take it up at that point. Yeah, that's straight, yeah.
I've got that as ten A then on the regular agenda.
Does anyone else have anything on the agenda? All right, with that, we are closed, we'll see you back at five.